Our meeting for, uh, what's the date? October ninth, twenty twenty-three at six P. M. And we'll start with our invocation and Commissioner Cox will deliver that for us.
All right. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for allowing us to be here in this fall weather. We appreciate that you provide us with the four seasons and it's just such a lovely time in Stokes County and we thank you for that. We thank you for allowing us to be here to do the work of, of the citizens of Stokes County and, and the government of Stokes County that will make good decisions that you lead, guide and direct us in everything that we say and do. We ask for your travel mercies on the way home tonight. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right. The next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is public comments. I'll open the floor for public comments if we have any. Do we have any? No public comments tonight. So that moves us to, uh, com- to comments from the manager and commissioner. So I'll start with Commissioner Cox.
All right. Um, I appreciate everybody being here, uh, today and the ones of you who are tuning in online and I just want to welcome you and, um, want to remind everybody DSS is doing a fundraiser and they are selling these bracelets for two dollars that say it's cool to be kind and the money goes to a lunch fund for DSS children. And, um, so you can stop by and buy them at the front desk. I don't know where else they're available.
John Brown.
John Brown store. There you go.
At Food Line in Wantacove.
Line in Wantacove.
Yep.
Thank you. And I guess that's all.
Okay, Commissioner.
I want to say.
Go ahead.
We are praying for Israel and everybody just be mindful of what's going on in the Middle East and, and just our prayers go out to the ones that are involved in that complex.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. I appreciate y'all taking your time out to come here. Uh, I was meeting earlier today with the, uh, Wantacove Senior Citizens Board of Directors and, and they asked me to say a few words and I says, well, I says, a bad day in Stokes County is better than a good day somewhere else. So that's all I got to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Hey, good evening, everybody, and, uh, appreciate everybody being here in person as well as tuning in on, uh, YouTube, YouTube and streaming. Uh, the only thing I really have is just, I just want to recognize, uh, National Fire Prevention Week, it was October eighth through the fourteenth. Basically, it's just, uh, I just want to make sure the importance of fire safety and being prepared. So our first responders, again, they're always first on the scene. When things do come up, please don't, uh, forget our public safety personnel here in Stokes County.
Okay, Commissioner Menon Hall.
Thank you. And I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here tonight and see all these smiling faces, especially those three. You gotta watch those three on that back row now. I mean, I've known them a long time. You gotta keep your eye on them. Watching them back there. Yeah. Thanks for being here tonight. It's, it's always great to see a crowd here that comes in and is interested in politics as far as the governmental process. Uh, for everybody that's watching online, thank you very much, uh, for taking part. And you know what? I had a couple of things to say, but Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Wood and Commissioner Challenge took everything I wanted to say, so I pretty much had all support words and I know y'all don't believe that. However, I am for tonight, so, uh, thank you for being here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Amber. You have.
I'll just say thank you to everybody who's here and looking forward to hearing your presentations. Thank you to those watching online as well. And it's good to have, uh, Mayor Nellie Brown here from Wantacove with us today. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, Mayor Brown and, and everyone else here in the room. Uh, uh, the, uh, I would just welcome everybody and also, uh, tell you that we're really glad you're participating in our local government. We need, uh, participation of the public and feedback from the public in every area so that we, uh, so that we do the right thing. I would just also mention the chaos in the world with Ukraine and now with the Middle East and, uh, bad actors that are orchestrating both of those conflicts. It's a very dangerous time and, uh, and we need to pray for all the people that are caught up in all of that. So with that, I'll go to our next agenda item, which is Conflicts of Interest Statement. Before moving further, does any board member have any conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight or any that might be perceived as a conflict of interest?
No.
No from everyone on that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. And can I get a motion for approval of that? Motion up for the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Okay, Consent Agenda is approved unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda, item number six, is, uh, Human Resources Quarterly Report, and I think Assistant H. R. Director Jamie Clark is gonna do a presentation on that for us. So welcome, Jamie.
Hello. How are y'all?
Good.
I hope this is gonna work for me. I didn't get to get in here and practice, so. This is, so Amber had talked to me about giving y'all just a few numbers to, um, give you an update on where we were with our employee count and what we had going on as far as turnover in the county. And I told Amber we were wanting to move forward to giving y'all a quarterly update every quarter. Um, and there were a lot of things that I didn't want to include in this presentation. I didn't have time to put it together in the short amount of time that I did. So if there's anything that you particularly are looking for, information you're looking for from our department that's not in here, just let us know and we'll be glad to include that in the next update, okay? So I know this is hard for y'all to see and I'll be glad to provide y'all with this.
Turn that one toward us a little bit.
Okay. So last pay period, um, we had four hundred and sixty-six employees on the payroll. Of those, three hundred and forty-two were full-time employees. This is a chart showing how many employees we currently have on our health insurance. So for medical, we are carrying three hundred and thirty full-time employees, dental, three hundred and twenty-nine, one hundred and sixty-nine employees on vision, three hundred and forty-two on our life. Uh, that's the term life policy that we carry on all employees. We have a hundred and two employees that are on our voluntary life, uh, that take the voluntary life insurance. We have thirty-six on short-term disability, forty on long-term disability, thirty-four on accident, twenty on critical illness, eleven on hospital confinement, sixty-four on our flex spending and then thirty-four on the flex spending for dependent care. And I know it's hard for y'all to see on this screen, but on the little side chart on the side, this is employees that carry dependents, uh, or children, their spouse or their family. Can you see that number, Amber? I think it's twenty-six employees that have one dependent, thirteen that carry children. We have ten employees that currently carry their spouse and we have one that carries the family plan for our health insurance. And I'll get into a little bit more about that here in just a little bit. We're gonna move on over to the employee turnover. And I know it's hard for y'all to see, this TV is bigger, but I broke it down by department. Um, so we have the turnover rate by department and then I also included our quarterly terminations. So that's how many employees termed in this quarter. And of course, this is gonna be the first quarter of the fiscal year, so this is July to September. And the next of that, I included the year-to-date employees that have terminated for that department. And then the turnover rate percentage amount that I've got on the end is the percentage of year-to-date numbers. So if you're looking at it all together for all county employees, we're looking at seventeen point nine-two percent turnover rate.
During what period?
That's year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
That number.
Fiscal year-to-date or calendar year-to-date?
Calendar year.
Calendar year-to-date.
So this year, we revamped our exit questionnaire data that we were, um, gaining from employees that termed with the county. Um, we've had forty-one of those completed calendar year-to-date. Um, we send, uh, exit package to employees when we hear their decision to part ways with the county. We'll send them a packet letting them know the exit process and we'll also send them this exit questionnaire with questions to answer, um, and then a time and date to set up their exit interview with us. This packet that they get, um, has a three-page question, just more answers for us on why folks are leaving. And then it also gives more room for detail if employees want to go into detail why they're leaving. So this shows a little bit more about why folks are leaving and like I said, we've only, we only got forty-one back. So, um, one of those were moving out of the area, twenty-one was for another job, five was for family circumstances, nine for better pay, four for better work conditions, four to return to school, two due to upper management, seven, uh, were retirees, five were dissatisfied with the pay, the pay, the hours, the type of work and one for job security. I will say too, um, on this slide that, um, the employees, when they do fill out more detailed information on that packet, we sit down and we talk with them about it and then we also review that with the county manager. A lot of times we'll send that exit questionnaire over to the department head unless the employee requests us not to. So these are the job postings that we have, the number of job postings that we've posted this quarter. And like I said, this is fiscal quarter, uh, July to September. So we've had three at animal control, one at emergency communications, three at senior services, one at DRC, one at environmental health, one at the fire marshal's office, two at information systems, two in human resources, one for veteran services, one for vehicle maintenance, two for EMS and two at DSS. So that's a total of twenty for this quarter. However, we've got a total of fifty-seven from year-to-date since January. And I've included a screenshot right here of our, um, job postings that are currently open, minus the one that closed at five o'clock today. But these are all listed on the county website, so if anybody watching online is interested in a job, these are our postings that we have online. And, um, we now have a fillable PDF version of our county application on the website, so folks can fill those out right there online and then shoot them straight to us. Just a few quick announcements. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Donna Rogers to the Human Resources Office. Donna was unanimously selected by an interview panel that took place on September twenty-sixth. Donna will start in the Human Resources Office on October sixteenth. We're looking forward to her arrival. We feel that her experience in payroll and customer service will benefit our department tremendously and I'm certain she'll be a huge asset to all the county employees. Another thing I wanted to touch on is we're happy to announce that agreements have been made and Gil and I have officially completed our training with the, um, Background Investigation Bureau to perform our background checks on all new employees and employees taking promotions within the county per our new background check policy. Um, other exciting news is after trying for three years to be enrolled into the, um, employment law class offered by the UNC School of Government, I finally was able to get into that class this year and I'm scheduled to complete that on this Thursday. Another thing that we have exciting news about is we have our very first implementation and planning call scheduled for this Friday for our new H. R. and payroll software, Pay Locity. And it thrills me to know that Donna will be here for the full implementation process of this new software. Um, we're looking forward to taking this on and I'm glad that she's gonna be here to help us from the ground up with it. And then last but not least, um, we've been working for months on this one, so I'm a little excited. With the help of the Stokes County Health Department, our insurance broker team, Cypress Benefit Solutions and Medico, we're happy to announce that beginning November first, we'll have an onsite clinic for all county employees at the health department. This will be a zero-dollar copay for all county employees that are on our health insurance and their family members. Um, some of the services that are gonna be offered, and this is just some, not all, is primary care for adult and children, physicals for adults and children, maternal health and family planning, STD testing, diagnosis and treatment, immunizations, laboratory services, medication prescriptions, minor procedures and a twenty-four-seven, twenty-four-seven triage nurse on-call. So we're excited about that. And that's all that I have today. Do you might have any questions?
Jamie, do you have on your, the turnover statistics, do you also track the, uh, the time of service the employee had? In other words, are you seeing a trend that overall it's, is it, uh, people with, say, less than five years experience that leave or three years or?
It's definitely, um, we're not tracking it, but we most certainly can add in the years of service they have with the county in that tracking. Um, we keep it on a spreadsheet, running live spreadsheet. That includes the reasons and, yeah. Um, and a lot of the things that we hear definitely is pay. Um, and of course, people expect that when, when you're working in a rural county government. But, um, a lot of it too is we, people come here to gain their knowledge and gain their experience and then move elsewhere. A lot of the things that we hear is the cost of family insurance. I've heard that several times in the last couple of months. The cost to add their, their spouse or their children to, to our health insurance is outrageous, so.
What? Cause I can't, I can't see real well on the, by department. What, what department has the, the highest turnover rate?
Looking at this, it looks like I.T. does, but that's only because we had I.T.
I.T.
But that's only because it's a, a department of three and they lost two employees. So, um, looking at this, it, that shows, but then your biggest turnover is gonna be in the sheriff's department and then of course EMS, it's hard to determine because EMS and emergency communications, those folks, if they don't reach a certain amount of required hours, then that's included in the termination count. Um, we are including full-time and part-time in there. And I know with, with Brandon and down in emergency communications, their SODs require them to work a certain amount of hours.
With the, with the public safety, um, personnel, I'd be real interested in knowing the, uh, the length of service. So in other words, if, say that, uh, say Brandon in emergency services is, you know, losing paramedics before three years, then I think we need to look at that because you gotta start tying, cause with all the training that, the certifications that we put them through, I think we, when the next year's budget comes around, that's the information that I would like to see as we're formulating our budget, especially in our strategic plan. Because if we're training people and they're getting a lot of experience and they're, and that's all the reason they're bailing out the door is money, then I think that's something that, that we need to look at.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And like I said, we had a meeting with, uh, a couple of members of the N.C. A.C.C. a couple of weeks ago and, and it's like, they said, we were, we were good with our wages for first resp- for emergency paramedics, uh, last year. We were really good. But then they can kinda name their price because they have a certain thing there that, that you have to have. And, and other counties around us have realized, you know, they're gonna have to up their price as well. So we're, we're no, no longer as competitive, so.
So Jamie, can I, I've also heard cost of family insurance is one of the big things. Several people have told me that. Can you, and I know we go through insurance, trying to find our most, uh, you know, compatible insurance as far as cost and everything. I hate to ask this, I'll talk where you don't have it, uh, in front of you maybe, but can you tell me the cost of the family insurance to cover?
It's right at fourteen hundred dollars per pay period.
Fourteen hundred per pay period?
It's, it's close to fourteen hundred dollars, yes.
Thank you.
Is that all you got? Is that all you got? Anything else? Well, just to tag off what Commissioner Menon Hall is asking. I mean, if that's the case, I mean, what, is there comparison to other?
Yeah, so I talked with other county, a lot of counties around us are on the state health plan. Um, we're reaping the benefits now of being self-funded. So I had a chat with our broker a couple of days ago to weigh our options for next plan year. So he's aware that this is on our radar and this is something that we're wanting to, to look at hard. Um, he's definitely planning on pricing out. He wants to price out all over the market. Um, we're gonna look at a couple of other options to bring to you guys of what we could do to be able to lower those costs as well.
You guys were both good to go?
Yep.
Good job.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, email me your presentation.
Sure will. Y'all want it?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, Jamie, just, you will just send it to me so I can upload to the agenda as well.
I will.
Thank you.
Anything else, Keith?
Say it.
Your report, thank you and welcome, Donna.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is the, uh, we're on the discussion agenda now and Substance Use and Treatment Committee recommendations.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, folks in the attendance, folks back home, thank you so much. Um, my name's Derek Fickers, uh, the chairperson of the Stokes Substance Use Treatment Committee. Uh, we've been meeting and we met today. Uh, we discussed, um, and made recommendations. Uh, we have, uh, the major recommendation of recommending Plan A due to some of the information we've received from communication with the OSTAT group and the N.C. A.C.C. group, um, about what is available for Plan A and what we had chosen for Plan B and how it could fit. Uh, so, per some of those recommendations, uh, and this comes from long conversations that we've had with, uh, professionals, uh, folks who are on the appointed committee, folks who are in the field. Um, we have three major recommendations currently. Number one is the hiring of a facilitator coordinator for the position. Number two, uh, the hiring of a peer support specialist. And number three, which you just got passed around, uh, the, uh, proposal of the M.A.T. Bridge Program, uh, through Stokes EMS. Um, these three recommendations are something that can make a direct and immediate impact once it is resolved, once it is established, the job posting for the facilitator and for the peer support specialist. Um, if you looked at the backside of that sheet, it talks about hiring, uh, some folks that will, um, help, uh, persons who are, uh, going through overdoses, persons who are, uh, in, in dire need and most need. For opioid settlement coordinator, uh, L. Cass, which is Licensed Clinical Addiction Specialist, uh, an additional community paramedic, uh, the peer support specialist, uh, medications which fall under the M.A.T. Bridge Program, uh, and then transportation costs. Uh, we heard from Dr. Darrell Nelson today, uh, at the, at the committee meeting who discussed this program. Uh, we talked about it at length, we talked about it and had a, a, had a discussion about it, about how this program could, uh, if implemented, uh, drastically improve the positive outcomes we want to see when we're talking about engaging, uh, with the community and utilization of the opioid settlement funds.
All righty. I think it looks good. I mean, if you're looking for comments, I mean, I like, and I like it also with the, the partnership with the health department.
Yes. Uh, and you know, if you're looking at the, now the, the M.A.T. Bridge Program, that is not something that I came up with and it was something that was developed with, uh, the Community Paramedic Program, uh, Brandon Gentry, uh, Dr. Nelson, uh, and the Health Department. And so it is something that I was really excited to hear about it today because this is the first time I've heard of it. It's outlined great. Uh, you know, when you're talking about some of the numbers like twenty-twenty-two year total, uh, a hundred and fifty overdoses and as of January one to September thirty of this year, we're at a hundred and forty-four. So you're talking about October, November, December still coming. Uh, so implementing a program like this in conjunction with the Health Department, with the M.A.T. provider that we now have, uh, thanks to, uh, the Board of Health, uh, Tammy Martin, uh, Dr. Cassidy Vu and that staff. And I know I'm forgetting someone else, I apologize. But, uh, the partnership with the Health Department as well as October Road, who is a medical, uh, M.A.T. provider in the county as well, that's something where it is going to be, cause I ask these questions specifically, when you're talking about someone who is in need and someone who, uh, will be receiving these services, the wait for some, uh, providers can be fourteen days just for an assessment. This type of program allows the Community Paramedic Program as well as the Health Department, uh, and October Road to engage with the individual, uh, and see that person between one and seven days. And, uh, when we discussed it further, it was estimated that it could be as little as four days. Like four days is your, is gonna be your window and that is taken into consideration, uh, like a Fri- it happened Friday evening or something. And so you gotta, you gotta take Saturday, Sunday and then Monday into consideration for that.
So I think it's, it's good stuff. It shows partnership within our community, shows partnership with things we've already got in place, especially from the Health Department with EMS. And so as long as the, as long as we communicate like we should communicate and keep both into the spectrum, this is, this is good and I appreciate that. Okay, Commissioner Menon, you have anything else?
I just want to, I'm sorry, uh, just remind me, Derek, uh, the two seventy-six is for how many years and what was our total amount that we received on this?
The current total amount or the total amount in whole, in its entirety?
Why don't you give me both of them?
Okay, so, uh, the first opioid settlement grant, uh, was just a little bit over four million. There's another, uh, there's more additional funding coming down the pipeline with around three million. Uh, for this number, for two seventy-six twenty, which is on the back of your handout that you got, that's yearly. Uh, that is a, a yearly cost. And when we talk about current funds in the bank account right now, I'm not sure if bankrupt's the right word, but, uh, in that pot is going to be a little bit over nine hundred thousand.
So I understand that the two seventy-six, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, twenty dollars is yearly. My question is, how many years is that going? Are we gonna be able to extend that through?
Yes. So.
I got some numbers for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brandon, I'm gonna stand right here.
So if we do this for five years at two seventy-six oh twenty and do a two percent increase for every employee, uh, over the next five years, it'd be one point four million, five hundred ninety-one dollars. What the county will receive in the next five years is gonna be right at three million seventy-six dollars, seven hundred and forty-seven. So there'll still be extra money in there to do other programs with this. Cause you gotta, I mean, right now it looks like we've received five twenty. This year, we're gonna get nine ninety-three. Twenty-four, twenty-five, we get five twenty-three. So we can carry this out pretty good ways and still add other, other programs to it.
So Brandon, you're saying this is, you, you encompassing five years, correct?
Yes.
When you gave me those numbers?
Yes, five years.
However, it's going on till, also allow us to have extra money for other programs?
Yes. But now them last few years, you know, we get in, the end of it, thirty-eight, or thirty-eight, thirty-nine fiscal years, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Gotcha.
So by then, we gotta be looking at some of these positions that need to go to county funding.
Sure.
After we get started, if it's a, you know, success, but best practice, this is working.
And that's where you'll have to go back and evaluate what has worked well and what has not worked well and, and concentrate the money in that effort, right?
I know something on, like the salaries, we just looked around what other people's doing. That may be something. H.R., you know, they gotta look at all the job descriptions, all that. We got, I think the committee has a copy of all them. Y'all should, okay, y'all have them. So that's something. If we need to adjust.
Did y'all ever pull up the job descriptions?
Pulled up, I pulled them up.
Okay.
Some of that may have to be tweaked in the salary range. Y'all may wanna do something different, uh, with H.R., but that's just going off what other people's doing.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Mr. Wood, you have?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, me and, I, I jumped the gun and was talking, talking to Sonya about this. If you, if you got, all right, you got two seventy-six twenty and you get that year, say, for five hundred thousand. So you're not using all that money. Are you allowed to draw interest on that money till you use it? And what is the timeframe?
Yeah. It's sitting in, it's sitting in a special account right now and it's drawing interest. Is that correct, Lisa? Whatever money we have sitting in there.
There's no timeline when it's gotta be borrowed. Used, I'm sorry.
No, not for thi- not for this set of money, there's not. I know we'll receive it over the next eighteen years, but no. No, cause I think, I think the only stipulation is whatever interest, of course, you gain on this, this funding has to go, be spent for the same purposes as the funding.
So if you invested it right, we could drag this program out.
Yeah. For sure.
And you're saying like five hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, so you're saying that other two hundred and twenty-four thousand can draw interest?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you.
Apparently, how much do we have?
It, like, like Derek said, by the end of this fiscal year, it should be a little over nine hundred thousand. So we're right, just, we're right under that right now. It's not, it's not much below.
Start interrupt. Uh, for the first few payments, there's a spring payment and a summer payment and I assume we're still waiting on the summer payment.[1785.41] we're still waiting on the summer payment. But, that's going to end, and then it's going to just be one springly payment made, one payment made in the spring moving forward. But, yes, and then Director Gentry was, was correct in that it goes down some towards the end, but also, if you can prove these programs work and they are effective, and we can show the data, we can show the numbers, it could be a permanent position within the county.
Well, I know that, my expectation would be too, that we very, very heavily start looking at grants. You know, we've talked about this for all county departments, but there, there is a lot, a lot out there, and I'm not, I mean, I've managed grants, but I've never, I never was actually the one that had to do all the searching and put the components together. But, just, just searching the federal database, there's a ton of them out there for this type of program. And the more, the more involvement you have with your current resources, combined with the current community resources, and us being a rural county, we'll get extra points for getting those awarded. So, when we get this thing up and running, we're going to have to make sure that, that we're doing grants because they're out there.
This facilitator coordinator, they really need to, that needs to be their focus.
Right.
Finding more money to go with it.
Well, I was just going to give an update to that grants manager position, will be posted this week. So, if you know anybody, that would be a good fit for that position. Feel free to tell them to apply.
Yeah. That's the coordinator, OPIO?
No, the grants manager position.
Oh, the one that you're doing.
Yeah, which, of course, this would be part, they'd be working for all departments, but with this as well.
At least they'd get us started until we get, you know, us, everything up and running. But, we get this grant manager on board, and they can start doing some magic.
Because the LCAS and the peer supports is the biggie to make this map program work. The health department really needs that LCAS person to be there with Cassidy Vu. And the peer support person needs to work for everybody in the county.
Right.
DSS, EMS, Health Department.
Yep, yep.
Now, maybe, right now, there's one, but may turn into, may be two. You know, we'll start out slow and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Keith, you got anything else?
Yeah. Yep, today was the first time that, at our meeting, that we kind of had this rollout of what was that, this proposal that came out of a meeting they had last week with Health Department Director Tammy and Brandon and Dr. Nelson, I don't know who else was there, Dr. Cassidy Vu. And it's basically, since we do have two MAT providers in the county now, the Health Department and October Road, and we do know that the Medicaid expansion's fixing to happen, which means even more people are going to get coverage that hasn't had it, is going to be looking for treatment options. So, this bridge thing that, where they can give the dose right then, because I don't, I mean, you can tell me more about Narcan, but it, it, does it immediately throw people into withdrawal, but, or?
Not necessarily.
Just depends on what they've took and what the person is and things. So, it's a, at that point, if you can get these people on medical assisted treatment and realizing that they can get it right then, and they can have four days, seven days till they can get them in with one of these providers, it's, it's just a huge thing. And I think Suri is already doing this, but...
Sir, there's no one.
But, the wraparound services that he's talking about is the peer support, the possible, Dr. Nelson was really big on adding a community paramedic because he said the hours that people overdose is, you know, it's not, sometimes it's 11:00 at night, and, you know, there, with two people, they're limited on their hours, and they, and if they had three, they could stagger their hours where there would always hopefully be somebody that could be sent out, and, and if not, maybe the peer support, one or the other. It would give more people to, to look at it, but I was really excited about this, and the money's sitting there. And if you look at what other counties are doing, it's pretty much very similar, peer support specialist, the facilitator, or coordinator position. The LCAS is something I think Tammy Martin's been talking about for, since before our budget plan in last year, about mental health and, and also a clinician that can help in that area. And like you were talking about with these grants, you know, I was just talking about it to somebody the other day, and they're like, there, there's a bunch of money coming down the pipeline for, for mental health and, and the addiction problem. So, the sooner we can get this off the ground and running, it's just going to save lives. I mean, the quicker we can do it. So, I think there's, we can look at what a peer support specialist would do and a facilitator, and they've included what you've got, some job descriptions, which I think Amber's looked at, but I think our, our human resources needs maybe to tweak it so that it fits our, what we're looking for. I'd like to see it come back to us as a recommendation to, to post these jobs soon. Because we're in competition with a lot of other counties that are all doing, posting these jobs.
Maybe, maybe I, in my mind, I was thinking when we went over this earlier, help me out, Derek and Brandon and Sonya, I was thinking that the original recommendation had us having two peer support specials instead of one. So, when the final amount came out, did we decide just to have one peer support specialist? I, I mean, I'm not talking about the coordinator, I'm talking about the peer support people. Did I, so, did I never hear of two at one time?
It was two, but I think this, this, because of after talking to the Health Department and Dr. Nelson and everything, they realized that probably need to add a community paramedic and an LCAS, which that wasn't really anything we talked about in, in maybe the early proposals.
LCAS wasn't in the earlier proposal?
Is that sort of taking the place of the second peer, peer support person?
Yes.
Because if we do all this together, it's going to make it roll so much smoother.
Okay.
Peer supports are big.
I got, oh, I know, and that's why I was asking, did we originally talk about two instead of one?
They could have had with the paramedics. It's a lot different, somebody's been in them shoes.
Absolutely. That's why, it's so important that...
We can even add maybe a part timer or something, and see if it can roll into another full, just to see how it goes.
I just know how important that position is.
Yes, sir. And previously, we, we didn't have an LCAS, and we've been saying it a lot, Licensed Clinical Addiction Specialist. I just want to make sure I put that out there because I hate sitting in meetings and I say the acronym and then I don't follow up with what it is. But, like you said, yes, sir, the peer support specialist, but also adding in the LCAS is, is, is something that's going to enhance the program.
Thank you.
What, what are you going to run into filling these positions?
Pay to pay.
Oh, yeah. Pay to pay over here.
Just like everything else.
Yes, sir. I'll shoot you straight, I mean, that's what it is.
Hopefully, there's people who like Stokes County, will stay here and live here.
No matter what you pay them. Because I'm hearing horror stories, you can offer no world, there's nobody there.
The community paramedic position's our hardest position to fill because it's 15,000 to 20,000 less than a paramedic filled position because of the hours. They don't get as, you know, near the overtime. Sort of a big gap between them two positions. That is our hardest position to fill.
I think we, sooner we can put it out there and see what we can get, what's, what's out there, what to apply, and, I don't know. Do we need to vote again on switching back to A or no?
So, when we originally proposed Plan B, there was some additional information that we didn't get until we started meeting with the OSTAT team, and I'd said that acronym. It's basically Technical Assistance for the Opioid Settlement Fund. That's what it stands for, I can't remember it exactly. So, since we didn't do the additional information that was required to go with Plan B, when we, when you recommended and approved Plan B, you said it, but it didn't really happen. So, recommending Plan A and saying you want to move forward with Plan A is a lot easier than the previous step.
That's what most counties are doing, and there's less hoops to jump through and less...
Haven't we already done the paperwork yet to put in for Plan A?
We did say...
For Plan B?
No, you did it for Plan, I thought we were going to do Plan A.
We are. Well, we had chosen, like Derek said, we had chosen Plan B first, and I had let this...
Yeah, I remember that, but I thought that...
Yeah, I'm asking, we need to take action to switch it or no?
There's no, there was no paperwork we had to turn in because we haven't spent any money. Like, I've done, I've done all of the reports for the opioid settlement funds and anywhere in there, I mean, yeah, if we had spent money on strategy, you would have had to say, you know, this is from strategy A or strategy B or whatever, but no, I haven't had to report. Officially, I haven't had to report yet.
We shouldn't have to vote on it then.
I mean, just a consensus will be fine, because I think, I think a lot of counties, you can switch from one to the other if you choose to, like, say, 10 years down the road, we decide we want to go top should be and do the strategic plan and process. I think we can switch over to that, is my understanding.
We have a consensus to go with A.
Yeah.
But, we can, we have a vote.
Is there one, did you want to do all these at once, or are you wanting to start with the coordinator first since they, and let them kind of oversee the rest of?
Probably could go ahead and advertise that first.
Yeah, the coordinator position should come first.
Well, what I'll, what I'll have to do, according to the, the rules for the MOA, is I'll have to, next meeting, I can have a resolution ready, which the board will have to approve, and it outlines which, how much funds we want to spend and on what strategy. We have to approve that, and now have to send it into the DOJ, and they have to approve it before we can send any, spend any funds.
Once we get that facilitator in place, then the organizational structure can become a part of that.
Right, but to even spend money to pay for that, we'll have to get it approved.
Sure, absolutely.
Put the other positions in and just not advertise them yet.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to go through the DOJ twice.
So, you just want to go ahead and do?
This is all very needed, and we even talked, the parole was there today, Joey Tilly, said this transportation is a big barrier. Then, somebody on the phone told us that there's some Medicaid non-emergency transportation money we could look at, maybe getting.
But, there's, there's one more thing too, I mean, we can go ahead and proceed with that, but something down the road in a couple of meetings that I want to propose that we talk about is where this coordinator position is going to go. And I'll just be honest with you, my recommendation, it goes under Public Health. Now, we, we can discuss that at a later date and times and get the pros and the cons.
It definitely needs to be discussed because I feel like that position's going to touch a lot of different departments with law enforcement, courts, the paramedic EMS. I mean, we can look at somewhat some other counties and how, where they're structuring them, so, yeah, I agree.
And I think it'll be some things we may have to tweak just a little because, like you said, transportation is a barrier to us in a lot of areas. Transportation has been a barrier.
Yep, yep.
So, what do we need to do for next meeting, have, do the resolution for the next meeting?
Yeah, and that'll kind of be your official approval.
Put that on action instead of discussion at the next meeting?
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on our agenda is gift of land to the county. I think Ty, you going to talk about that?
Yes, I am. Mark Black, the manager of Chestnut Street Investment LLC, had previously notified the board that he wanted to make a gift of land to the county. And this is a 15.85 acre tract that joins the old Francisco school property. And he acquired that in 2017, and the board requested that I contact him to make arrangements to accomplish this, and I did so, and he just had one request that, that the county use the, the land as a county recreational park for at least 15 years. And I told him that we could put that as a restriction in the deed, which I did so. And he has signed the deed and a declaration of gift, which Amber has the original of that. I asked Mark if he wanted to appear before the board and formally present the deed to the board, and he said that, that wasn't necessary unless the board wanted him to appear. So, he authorized me to, on his behalf, to deliver this to the, to the board, to present the gift, and the board would need to formally accept the gift.
Ty, did you say?
Your receipt to...
Looking at this, I just want to make sure, 15.85 acres from Mark, knowing a restriction is, the first 15 years, that has to be used for recreational purposes?
Well, it doesn't have to be the first 15 years. See, I asked him if he wanted to put any kind of time deadline in that, and he said no, he did not. He just, he just wanted it to be used for a minimum of 15 years.
15 years, at least 15, okay.
As a, as a recreational park.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, you got to come in.
I just, just like to thank Mark and Terry, his wife, for, for the donation, and I know that it's, it's very, very important to the, to the community of Northwest Stokes County, the people that have lived in that area, and of course, you know, they all went through the losing of the elementary school. One of the constant things that, you know, that I hear and I feel is that, because along with the school that went, it went with also the, the ball fields and the, the recreation area, and they're just, for the longest time, they've struggled. They got a good foundation, they got a lot of people that, blood, sweat, and tears that go into this foundation and, and trying to make a difference in that, in that part of the county. And this will actually give them a landmark of something that they can see every day now, when, as we, as we get into this, and success breeds success. And again, I just, I just want to thank, thank them both so much for giving that community a little boost, and, and I can't wait to see, because my, my thing will be, we will get a lot of input from Stokes County citizens on what they want to see go in to that, into that park, and it'll be something that the whole county can be proud of.
Thank you very much.
Yes, basically the same thing, he said, just, my mom always says, when somebody gives you something, tell them thank you, so thank you.
Sonya, come in.
Yeah, they're very appreciative of this gift, and it's, it's good to know something good can come out of, of, you know, having to close Francisco back in the day, and this can be something that we can hopefully have something there to, that can be utilized by the community and this, this kids in that area, and, you know, we did a community build playground in, in King back a long time ago, and I'd be glad to talk to anybody that wants to talk about what that would take to build something up there if they wanted to take that route, but also, I think this grant writer position could be very useful here to come up with something that may could, it could be utilized for, for the community, so, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I just also want to thank this one.
Go ahead.
I also want to thank Mark.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I've known him and Terry. I've known Mark since 2016 when I got elected, and I had a couple of meetings with him, and he's a very nice person. And to him and his wife Terry, I say thank you. And Mark, I hope you heard that, thank you.
Alrighty, I would, I would join the other commissioners and thank Mark and Terry for their generosity, the community, they've got, like Mark, like Brad said, they've got a really good group up there that really works hard to support that community, and Mark's worked closely with them and supported them as well. So, I think this land might be, I think they might, they might be able to use it in conjunction with some other land that's being donated that might have something to do with the river access and so forth, so it's, it sounds like it's going to be a really win-win situation, and we might drag Mark up here sometime and thank him in public for, for doing this, but we'll sign about that later, so, anyway, we do very much appreciate it.
You will need to move this to action to formally accept the gift.
Tonight, okay. Okay, the board good with that?
And then we can go ahead and record it.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Alrighty, the next item on our agenda is Health Department bad debt write-off request. Bring up the bad word, it's due.
I'll just briefly go over that. So, you had in your agenda packets the debt write-off request from the Health Department, Health Director Tammy Martin had requested this, and she not long ago requested one as well, I think they were a little behind on it, but this is the annual request that the department is required to make in order for them to be compliance with the state and also their fees policy here at the Health Department too. It's already been approved by the Board of Health, if I'm not mistaken, but it just now needs Board of Commission approval. but it just now needs Board of Commissioners approval. So they can write that off.
This is, and I just want to say to the rest of the board, this is an annual thing. This is my seventh year on the board. We've had to do it all seven years, once a year.
Since I'm new, I got one question. Once you write it off, you can't use any kind of agency to collect it. It's gone.
They, they deem it uncollectible as well.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, does that just need to go for our action next time or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we'll put that on action agenda for next time then. Okay, our next, anybody have any other questions about that? Okay, our next item is Fire Commissioner appointments, Fire Service Member. Amber, you want to talk about that one?
So, um, there are currently two open vacancies for Fire Commissioner terms that are ending for the Fire Service Member positions. Um, the Stokes County Fire and Rescue Association has already, they approved Brad Mitchell to serve another term. He's currently on there and appointed a new, uh, Fire Commissioner, Brock Wheeler. Um, and they ask that he be considered for the next term of October 2023 to October 2025. Um, like I said, they've already appointed these two individuals, um, but we did, they just need our approval as well to officially appoint them to the, to the board.
So do we need to nominate them, open the floor, nominate them?
Yeah, if you will, just for format, just to go through that process.
Do we also need to, uh, after we nominate them, do we also have to close nominations after having this meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to and then we can just move them to action.
Move it to action?
Next meeting.
At the meeting, yeah, next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, just do it like normal, but they've, they've kind of already, already reappointed them. Like I said, they just need our, our approval.
I don't know if, if anybody else wants to, uh, appoint or recommend anybody else, but I'm going to make a motion, if I can get a second, to close nominations right here with these two people, Brad Mitchell and Brock Wheeler. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so those two guys are nominated.
And I'll just move it to action for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
And then.
Go ahead with the next one if you want to.
Then this one's a little different. It's the Fire Commissioner appointment, but it's for the civilian member. Um, so this is the one that the Board of Commissioners appoint. There's one vacancy available and we actually only received one application during the time period it was opened from, um, Albert Osteen the fourth and his application, appointment application and resume are attached. Um, so if the board doesn't have any other, um, nominations, he is the only one that I received during that open period.
Yes, we need open for nominations to nominate Bert and open the floor for nominations. Somebody nominate Bert.
I'll nominate Bert.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the floor for nominations. We don't have anybody else, right?
Make a motion to close nominations or if Rick just did it, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nominations are closed and Bert is nominated.
Yeah, and then we'll just do the, um, action at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Next item on our agenda, City of King ETJ Planning Board, Board of Adjustments Appointment. Um, I think we have two people have an alternate in a primary position to fill and we have two individuals that have submitted applications.
And I have a little bit more information on that. Like I said, like you said, we have a, the regular position open. We also have an alternate position open for that same slot. And like I said, I have a little bit new information. Uh, I heard from Mr. Robbins, Mr. Robertson today. He emailed me and asked to remove his name, but he wanted to be considered for the, um, alternate position, which I told him we were considering for that as well. Um, he said that Mr. Ramsey was very, very interested and, and was really interested and wanted to take on this position. And so he, he, if, if preferable, the board can nominate, uh, Mr. Ramsey for the position and Mr. Robertson for the alternate position.
Okay, so let's, do we need to open the floor for nominations first?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and nominate Joe Ramsey, uh, for the primary position on the, uh, City of King ETJ Board.
Okay.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, and then nominations for the alternate? That was primary, right?
I'll nominate Vaughn Robertson for that alternate.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Make a motion, we close nominations.
Second.
I'll just, action next meeting.
Action next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, I think that brings us to our action agenda. Uh, Animal Control Advisory Board Appointment, Sandra Robinson was nominated, uh, to the Animal Control Advisory Board for the Animal Rescue Member Position at the last meeting. Uh, we just need to poll on her, I think.
Yeah, I haven't received any more since.
Okay. So, uh, start with Commissioner Meninoff.
Uh, Robinson.
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 Robertson.
Robinson.
Okay. So she is appointed. Then our final, or next to final, I think it is, action item, uh, is the sale and purchase agreement for the Lewis property. I get a motion for that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brad.
Make a motion to, uh, accept the contract to buy from Harold Lewis, his property 1139 Dodgstown Road, Womacove.
I'll second.
Okay, anybody have any question or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And what was the other one?
The gift of land to the county, accept the.
Gift of land from Mr. Black, uh, going to get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Accepting that.
Second.
Question, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. I think that takes us to closed session. If, Amber, if you want to read the rationale.
To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1183, and to consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners, or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners, or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1186.
All right, motion to go on and close.
Motion, uh, make a motion that we on a closed session.
Second.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Going to take a two or three minute break before we go.
Two and a half.
Okay, we are now back into open session. Does any board members have any further business for tonight?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Aye. I'm prepared to say aye. We adjourn.